... visitors in the audience. Okay, alright, so first things first, let's go through the minutes. I just popped you the ones from the special meeting.
I'm trying to find it, hold on.
I mean, I just sent you one.
Trying to see if it will load online if not, and we got today email.
We need the ones from August fifteenth, right? Is that what we're looking for?
No, those are the ones I sent you.
Right, and then I was.
The ones you sent were.
Eight twenty-five, yeah, but I need to get the ones up. There we go, so let's look at eight fifteen first. You know, August fifteenth seems like it was six months ago, I don't know why, and I'm like, good lord. Alright, so.
Okay.
Anybody got them?
Yep.
Alright. Okay, guys, I have to go, man, I don't actually know where you're starting. When we did the special meeting in August, we went over temporary structures, right? Okay, so when did we approve municipal?
I didn't have, I didn't have in my notes or anything, I did not have a motion to approve the municipal.
Hold on, let me look at some.
Unless I missed it and I was asleep, half asleep, I don't know, good, but it's possible.
Let me, let me find something and I'll tell you when we did it.
I didn't record any motion to approve.
It looks like you're waiting for the special meeting to approve it.
So did you take it out on the, at the special meeting?
In the eight fifteen minutes it says.
No, I mean, that's the way I interpreted and I didn't have it in my notes. Unless we, there was a motion and I didn't.
My back to tape.
I, I did not have a tape that day.
No.
Oh, that tape.
Yeah, second.
I thought we talked about it at the special meeting.
I thought we did as well.
I mean, there was a large, a long discussion, yeah.
We, we did go through it because we pulled up the GIS map and went through everything that would have been in MUN. I was at the special meeting.
Oh, okay.
I was, and we did pull up the GIS map and go through the, every single thing that would have been included in MUN in the entire.
I think Mary is trying to determine, I think, if they were approved, if there was an approval to.
It's not the only thing Mary's trying to figure out.
See, this is all the notes that I have and I don't have anything that talks about any.
Wasn't she going to break to the council following week or something?
And I, and I did, I did.
Yeah.
But here's what's weird. I don't see, I have a whole file of recommendations to council, I mean, going back to like twenty fourteen.
All right, so did you recommend it two times?
Well, here's what we're gonna do.
We had the whole list and we went through every single one of the lots that you have listed.
I thought we did that.
Oh, yeah, we did, okay, alright, okay.
Cause we hammered that out, we went through every single one of lots and identified them all.
Alright, then I'm gonna have to make some changes.
Okay, but it wasn't approved, that's my question.
It was approved because I wouldn't have presented it to council.
That's okay.
But, but here's what we're gonna do, we're gonna reapprove it tonight so we're legal, alright? I mean, I know we did it. I remember now, because you.
You mean at the special meeting?
Yeah, Ms. GIS was here, outlined all the parcels, I'm like, that's cool, send that to me, I'll send that to the council, so I don't, I just must not have noted we did it, so let's go back to eight fifteen and we'll fix eight twenty-five in a minute. Ooh, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Alright. Yeah, Theresa, I think you have it in there correctly, because Don asked us to have it for them, for their council meeting, so they could call the public hearing. Okay.
Why am I not able to get the email that you sent me? I can't open the file.
Hold on, let me see.
See if I can open it on the, on my phone.
I'm, I'm good with the minutes from eight fifteen.
Okay, alright.
Anybody got any questions? Okay, I'm getting the motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Okay, Tasha?
Good, that's good, now let's.
Is it okay that she even thought she was okay?
Oh, I might not, I might not be, cause I wasn't here.
Will you, I mean, well, that's probably true.
Okay, then I'll, I'll, okay.
I'll second. Okay, so we got that, that's good, now, let's go, man, that's bugging me now, that really bugging me. Let's go to municipal district. And.
We're not looking at the minutes first? Of August twenty-fifth?
Well, yeah, we need to, Theresa, thank you, I put my head out, I'm filling in for somebody at work and it's like, ooh. Alright, so let's look at the minutes from eight twenty-five first. Alright, here's what I'm gonna do, where am I here? Okay, you gotta add in.
Well, on August twenty-fifth, you have that upon completion of the discussion, Taylor made a motion to approve to council and.
But that was for temporary structures.
There's nothing in here on.
There's nothing in there on municipal, which doesn't.
So in the, in the actual, well, in the minutes, you don't have anything that's discussion of.
That's the problem. We were discussing and I wasn't writing. Okay, so, what we're gonna do is, um. Hang on a second, I'm gonna put in there, I'm gonna add something, okay?
Is there, I, yeah.
Hang on. We just gotta be sure we're, we're legal when we do this, so, I'm gonna add. Alright.
So I got an email from Mary on the twenty-fifth of August.
Yeah.
Final drafts of MUN and temporary structures are taken, so.
I mean, I know we did it.
Yeah, and I have my email, the U is on November twenty-five on eight twenty-five.
Yeah.
And just pay attention to the German because the German is also eleven, meeting started at eleven, and then German at eleven.
Yeah, I think my map was the last thing to go out, we were, we were definitely here until eleven thirty.
Oh, we were here, I'm, I think we were actually here till eleven. Okay. Okay, so here's all I'm gonna do.
Yeah, we did this. I'm looking at it, can we do?
Yep, I'm looking at everyone of theirs, I mean, I was gonna say, that's where I sit for this now.
Yeah.
We have gone through every single one of them, and what sites are what, what should be included in the UDO.
Okay, here's what I put, I put municipal zoning district board reviewed all the details of the proposed municipal district, motion was made to approve but not recorded. And then we'll just do it tonight.
That's the truth.
Of course it's the truth, of course it's the truth.
Okay, so for my, my purposes, Mary, are you, am I recording that there was an amendment to the minutes or?
Well, yeah, because what we're gonna do first is we're gonna go, we need to approve the minutes from the twenty-fifth, okay? Which clearly says, we didn't, we did it, but it wasn't recorded, so if it's not recorded.
Okay, so you want me, what I'm trying to ask is whether I should be writing.
Yeah, you, you can put, at, at, at eight twenty-five special meeting, the municipal zoning district was approved and a motion, a motion was made to approve, but not recorded. So we're gonna reapprove it tonight.
Uh, yes, but also, what about the discussion itself?
We just reviewed all the details of the district.
Okay.
I mean, basically, we didn't really change anything.
No, we just identified all the lots and made sure, verified that every lot that has been identified was actually verified by the MUN district.
So I'm just gonna say that, you know, just discussion ensued, approved but not recorded.
Yeah, motion, motion to approve to council was made but not recorded, and I'm gonna send you what I just did here.
And who made the motion, anyone?
Well, we don't know, that, I didn't, that's, that's the problem, for whatever reason, my steel-trapped mind didn't record who did it, so.
Mary, for, for, for whatever it's worth, I'm glad you made a mistake so I don't feel that, so I don't, would not make. Because you're so, you're so bright and fantastic, so I don't.
Alright, so I'm re-sending the minutes that I just sent and it now includes a paragraph about motion was made to approve but not recorded.
And did you change the time?
Yes, I did, yes, I did, okay, now, I need a motion to approve the municipal zoning district to council.
Okay, since I wasn't at the.
Motion to approve, I'm making the motion.
Okay.
I'll second, okay, let, I'll second.
I'll second, I'll second.
Okay?
Okay.
I just wanna cover our tracks, I don't wanna.
Yeah, well, we, I wasn't present, so I don't wanna.
Yeah, okay, alright, so, now.
Alright, okay.
We usually don't have that much drama over, trust me, we really don't.
I'm following you.
Just drama over minutes.
Alright, so now let's get into what we're really doing here.
Okay.
Get the agenda up really quick.
Okay. Alright, I can't wait to see, are we talking about temporary structures that are different than the ones that we discussed before?
Well, let me just get to the agenda really quick and I'll tell you. Okay, okay, so, when I presented temporary structures to the council, they agree we need to do something. They wondered though, like, we don't really have anything, everything we focused on was about rehabs, right? We wouldn't really talk about new construction, so they had a concern that if you were doing new construction.
Oh, okay.
And it took more than, you know, like, six months, where were we gonna, what were we gonna do about it?
That's the approval process, you can get another, what was it, three months that we talked about?
You can get another three, what I'm wondering is whether somebody wants to bird dog going into the UDO and just, I don't think we have anything in there that says, you gotta remove your stuff, because any builder with a brain isn't gonna leave things he's renting, sitting in somebody's driveway longer than he has to, I mean, that's just not smart. Um, but I need a couple of ya to, to Roger up, to just go through the UDO and just bird dog that thing and see if you can find anything. I, I don't, I don't think it's there, but we never had that question.
But I, but I, I'm sorry, but I'm looking at the minutes from the, from whatever, and it says that they are permitted to be on premises for ninety days from the start of construction.
Right.
These are my notes, okay?
Right.
An additional time can be granted at the discretion of the zoning administrator for a maximum time of an additional sixty days, so we're actually talking about a hundred and fifty days.
Right, but see, here's the thing, think about, go back to COVID, okay, not, not literally go, but think of what construction was like during COVID. I mean, houses took two, a year and a half, easy.
They're still at eight months.
Yeah, so what we need to figure out is whether we need to put something in about new construction. And I don't know, I'll check with Lisa to see if there's something in the building plan process, okay? Let me just put that in there, yeah, she just got back from vacation, so we're gonna let her rest today.
So we're, we're only addressing the new construction?
Yeah, the other one's done.
Okay.
Alright. Okay, and does anybody wanna Roger up in?
So you want me to look up, uh, new construction, temp structure limits?
Yep.
If there are any.
Yeah, and look at the UDO and see, I, I just don't think we have anything.
Or if they have, if there's a time limit for removing, like.
Okay.
Builders of friends.
No, 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 because here's, here's the thing, we've never had problems, I've never had a complaint about, hey, they finished that house, that new house and, and those people moved in and they left the dumpster there, I mean, gosh, you just don't, people don't do that, so.
Okay, so, not, not the dumpster, but that brings me up to, what about those lots that intended to build and decided not to and, and it doesn't, it doesn't, it looks like it's still a construction site, even though there's no temporary building or anything.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not up to us, that's not, that's not part of the discussion tonight.
It can stay like that?
What, what, you know, cause I, I was just gonna say the same thing, what happens when you have a builder that puts, you know, outhouses or, you know, portigons and, and stacks material there, but leaves the, they don't finish it and it's been months.
Years, where, where are we talking?
Eleventh hole.
I don't wanna say, you know, I don't wanna.
Whoa.
Cause I don't wanna act you out.
Talking the street.
But it's, I mean, cause.
Talk about the general area.
It's an empty, on, on North Shamrock.
You need to ask Lisa about it, back in, I'm trying to think, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen maybe, we had an issue, an issue somewhat like that, but more serious because over that way, there were some duplexes that were being built, and we got as far as the foundations were in the ground, and then the builder, um, well, the money was tight, I mean, there's, you know, the builder wasn't able to complete, and so after we had a lot of resident complaints, that finally came to the council. But in this one, I would call and talk to Lisa first, because that really is not a, that's not a zoning issue. You know what I mean? We don't, we don't really have anything to do with telling the guy to move his stuff, that's a, that's a village, that's a zoning administrator issue.
But if you're, wouldn't it be kind of like a zoning, because we don't know what the intention, everybody thinks that the intention is to build a house, but maybe it's a place that this contractor decided to.
No, 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 it, it can't work that way, they wouldn't get permission to start if they hadn't submitted plans to Lisa.
Okay, what, what happens when those plans don't get fulfilled, what if?
That's what I'm saying, planning and zoning, that's not really a zoning issue.
Okay.
It's a, it's a zoning administrator issue because Lisa issued the permit, but if you have somebody over there and it's been months and months, you should let her know, because, I mean, she'll take action.
Okay.
Or at least check with the builder to go, hey, WTH, what the heck over?
Don't they have time limits on their application?
Probably, probably.
And then penalties for missing those time limits?
You know what, I, I'm not, I have not really been through the permit application, but Lisa will know, you email her, do a report of concern through the website.
He won't, he doesn't wanna do it.
Uh, no, it's not that, I don't, you know, I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna be a troublemaker, I don't want to, you know, cause, you know, there may be problems that is financial or whatever, but I just think it's an eyesore when it just left there and holes in the ground and, you know.
Well, you could call Lisa and ask her hypothetically.
No, just, just, just submit, just, just submit a con, just submit, submit a concern through the website, it's easy. It's not, it's not causing trouble, I mean, if you have a concern because no one's done anything in four or five months, that's kind of a big deal, but we had that same situation on South Shamrock, where it took Red Door two and a half years to build a house. I mean.
Uh, she might tell you, you, you remember, Mary, the one that I, that I told you about? Her response to it is that there's no ordinance, if there's no ordinance, uh, related to that, to the issue I'm bringing up, there's, she, she can't do anything about it.
Right, but I think.
So, I mean, this would be a similar situation, is there an ordinance for something like that to happen, period?
That's not, that's something you're gonna need to ask her, because I'm gonna maintain that that's not really the purview of planning and zoning, to tell a builder how long it should take them to build a house. Now, making sure that, that you have the right fencing regulations and, you know, that kinda stuff, yes, but that other stuff, I'm a little leery of. So I will let, Rick, I'll let you either submit a concern or talk to Lisa first and see what she says, okay?
I can do that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Mary, back to temporary structures, what we've got is the clerk will authorize an initial period of ninety days, at the clerk's discretion, an additional sixty days may be granted, can we just add another restriction? Another sentence there on new construction, this may be extended as required for the bill?
Well, yes, no, I mean, maybe, I think we gotta see if we got something in there first.
I will, I'll check, but I mean.
I'm thinking we don't wanna make it difficult.
Right, there shouldn't be no more than another sentence in there, right?
Yeah, and I don't know, here's the thing though, if we put that in there, then the person who's doing the remodel or whatever is gonna stand up and say, well, my remodel took longer than I, you know, I mean, that's.
I can't imagine Lisa not giving them an extension.
She probably would, but it might be better to look to see if we can put something about new construction in the building or subdivision thing.
Well, so, I think, the way I'm looking at it in a way is like, you know, I'm going back to the Aberdeen thing, that, are we talking, it says temporary structures, but it seems to be that it's related to a temporary use permit to do something in the, in the, in the sense when we did it.
Yes and no, cause I thought of the same thing, the person who's having the work done in their house is gonna have to pull permits at the county.
Okay.
So really, if they're just storing, like, like the situation on, um, South Shamrock, they were storing construction, construction materials in the tent.
Okay.
So I don't know that it's really a temporary use.
Okay, this, this one, I think, this, you know, it's up from Aberdeen, it says a temporary construction-related use is permitted on a lot in residential business, blah, blah, blah. Temporary construction-related uses include construction of business offices, storage buildings, equipment on outdoor storage lots, and employee parking areas, okay, so.
But that's, none of that's talking about rehab in a house you already live in.
But, okay, so we already did that, but now you wanna talk about new construction, completely new construction, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, so we, we already put to rest the one we did.
Right.
Which was for rehab.
Right.
So, but this one doesn't talk about rehab, this talks, this talks about, it looks like to me like it's just construction, period, it doesn't say anything. Says a temporary construction-related use shall be removed within thirty days of issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the structure.
Ooh, there's your answer.
That's a nice, uh.
There's your answer.
Limit to.
It's on it?
Yeah, no, in ours, we said.
That's the.
Um, hold on a second, in, in our temporary structures, we had something about ten days after a CO was issued and the council wants that out, but in new construction, ten days after, because you have to get a certificate of occupancy.
I was gonna say, in a, in a residential remodel, you did not have to get a certificate.
No, because you're probably not leaving your house.
Right.
So you could look to see if we can put it in. No, it's gotta go someplace in the UDO, and it would be as easy as saying, you know, builder must remove all temporary structures from the property within, I don't know, whatever many days you think is good upon issuance of a CO.
This one is called construction-related uses.
We want one specific to new construction, and if we could do it based on the certificate, the certificate of occupancy, that's a slam, that's easy, that's like a one sentence change.
Like you said though, it's, what, you know, builders, they don't wanna leave their stuff.
No, of course not, I would.
Okay, but, but, but do they issue a certificate of occupancy for rehab? No.
No, that, but, but that's why, that's why we have ours permitted through the village clerk.
So, but I think that then this one seems to relate to new construction, because you would get a, I don't care where you are, you wouldn't get a certificate of occupancy for remodeling your bathroom, but.
No, no, you don't need one, but what I'm saying is if we can just get one sentence in to the UDO someplace for the, where we talk about new construction, that just says, all temporary structures must be removed within, you know, so many days of issuance of a CO, that just makes it really simple, we need about one or two sentences.
The, the, the problem that I have with just calling them temporary structures is, did we call the temporary structures, the ones we did?
Right.
So, if you wanna make a difference between.
We're gonna, we're gonna, I think we're gonna make the delineation between new construction versus rehab.
Okay.
I think, I think that's, I think that's what we're doing.
Alright.
You guys agree?
Absolutely.
Okay.
My biggest concern was I didn't want the temporary structure to bleed over into parties and children's events, things of that nature.
Right, that's totally true.
Because that's, that's just, that's a hardship in the village, so, keep it with rehab and, and new construction, then you're only dealing with large tents or large structures that would house construction items meant for a short period of time, or furniture or whatever, yeah.
And if you think about it, when somebody's building, okay, let's say it's new construction, they're using subs, right? They aren't gonna leave a lot of stuff on the lot, you wanna know why? It's gonna get stolen. I mean, just like when they finally go to put power on the properties on Wendy Ridge, we talked about that, they're gonna, they have to use generators until just about they're ready to seal the deal, because Duke isn't, can't keep up with the power request, so no builder in their right mind is gonna leave anything valuable set on the lot, cause it's gonna get.
Well, you know, you know what else it says here that is, might be also useful? It says a temporary use permit shall not be issued until a site plan is approved, or a building permit is issued for a principal's factory, except as allowed in section blah, 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 blah.
Well, when people come in with building plans, they have to go to Lisa.
Alright.
They always go to Lisa, same thing, if, if somebody comes in and they're gonna do any kinda subdivisions, they have to come in with a site plan.
Okay, so, but I, I guess then my question, my question to follow this up is, in either case, whether it's new construction or the rehab, is there an actual permit, uh, given for the temporary structure?
Yeah, there is, there is now, yeah.
Okay, so I think that, so this, so, so.
A building permit is given, in new construction, they have to get a building permit, their plans have to go through the zoning committee.
Okay, no, this one is temporary use permit.
Okay, we're not asking them to get a temporary use permit, we're just asking them to get a permit so they can have a temporary structure while they're doing construction.
It's just for low cost.
It's just so that we don't get in the.
So they can put a timetable on it.
Yeah, it's like, so we don't get into the situation that we have right now in South Shamrock where it's been up for like eight months.
Okay.
That's really what it is.
Alright.
You good?
Is that, the one in South Shamrock, you're talking, new construction, or you were talking about the one?
No, 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 it's a rehab.
Oh, yeah, the corner, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, nice people, okay, we good with that one, and Al, you're running with it, right?
I'll check it out.
Alright, thank you, and I'll check with Lisa on the building permits, okay, let's go, um. I gotta, can we jump down to PZ board terms just for a second, I think it would knock this out pretty quick. I asked Lisa, remember, we talked about how the, the terms weren't really done the way they're supposed to be per the UDO.
They were done, however they were done because of the fact that they were for new people.
Yeah, so we kinda got it turned around, I need to know from, Lisa would like to, to leave them the way they are, and just have people complete their terms, and then, you know, make the correction afterwards. I'm sort of okay with that, but sort of not okay with that.
What do you mean by correction now?
Well, say for example, when Al was appointed, he should have been appointed for three years, okay? When I was reappointed, I should have been appointed for three years, Rick, you were appointed for three years, right, and Theresa, you were appointed, yeah. Yeah, so, and you're also appointed for three years, right, so it's mine and Al's, okay? So, I don't know, I guess maybe I should talk to you, Al.
Well, if I'm around.
You're not moving, don't tell me about moving.
Well, yeah, no, I'm just, trying to reach humor.
Good job, yeah, so, I mean, I don't know if we have a, the thing I'm concerned about is my term, technically my term's up, but we have that thing in the UDO that says you continue, you can continue to serve until your replacement is found, right? But, let's say that takes a couple of months, Al's term expires, I leave.
And he's gone too.
And he's gone, now we got two more spots to fill, where if we make Al two, three years.
Well, you don't, I mean, you really don't, still, you still don't, it's not like a, ultimately Lisbon or something.
No, exactly, yeah, it's not like we're gonna pay you all, we're gonna prison, yeah, it's not like we'll send the cops after you, but, I knew, I don't know, I, I'm kinda partial towards making them right.
Well, the only thing is, I kinda looked at that, Mary.
Yeah.
Look at the, at the next paragraph though, cause it kinda says, it kinda explains it, I'm trying to find it here. Administration, was it?
Where are you?
Where are you?
He's in the UDO.
In the UDO, UDO.
Oh, yeah, he's, okay, in our UDO, okay.
Counsel.
Terms for counsel or? It's two one.
Officers and employees, was it three? Where's our, you know, board talks about planning and building?
Uh, I'm searching it right now. Electicums for terms, 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 terms.
It's two dash one? Two dash one point two.
There we go. Okay, we consist of five members, quorum is three. It consists of five members, quorum is three. Okay.
I still can't find it.
I got it. It's twenty-one dash two dash one point two. And it says appointments shall be made for staggered terms of three years, but members may continue to serve until their successors have been appointed. Initially, two members who reside in the village shall be appointed for three-year terms, one member in the village, and one member in the ETJ shall be appointed for two-year terms, and one member who resides in the village should be appointed for a one-year term.
Okay, so would she appointed for two or for three?
Three. You three guys are fine, because initially, we're way past initially. We initially in twenty thirteen. So all our terms should be three years. But they're staggered. Al, you got it?
No, I can't, I can't really.
Well, they're generally staggered anyways, because most of us will come in at different times.
Yeah, but it doesn't. Al, I don't wanna, I don't take this the wrong way.
Yeah.
But if you're only appointed for a year.
Yeah.
I mean, you almost got your legs under you after a year, right? I mean.
Not even.
Yeah, it takes a while.
Well, what I was getting at is, say for instance, if, if I was to bow out, the next person according to that only fulfills the two-year. According to that paragraph.
Why, why were you only given a year?
No, because you were, no, because you were only appointed for one year.
Right.
But you shouldn't have been.
But you're saying a three-year term.
If, you're saying if I push it to be a three-year, now I got it.
I can't find it.
No, yeah.
It has, uh, didn't, doesn't it have to, to do with whoever you're replacing?
Yeah, which, that, that would make sense, because if you're replacing somebody that has already a year in, then you should get the two years.
Right, because you're gonna fill the, the unexpired portion of their term, right?
Right, that, that makes sense. So if you came in, but there was a year left on the term of the person you replaced, you do a year and then you reappointed.
Exactly.
Okay.
So do you still wanna do that, or like?
Right.
Say for instance, you replace somebody, do you just start them at three years again, too? Was my point.
I wanna know which one you think guys think gives the board more stability.
Why, I, I don't, I'm not quite understanding why they didn't do it that way, like, why is Alan not?
Well, we know, we screwed up. We didn't screw up, but when the appointments came out, I didn't catch it, and we didn't do it in line with UDO.
So as long as they're staggered, then, so I'm already three, Teresa's three. So then you just have to figure out how, where we are in the staggering line there, and then just correct it for.
Well, every term should be three years.
But, but it's, because it's staggered, so.
But, but the, the stagger was done initially. When the board was reconstituted in twenty thirteen, the terms staggered.
Right, it's like the House or the Senate, that they stagger the terms.
So since that time, everybody should've been on three-year terms.
But when does it, it's when they end is, is where the stagger, so my, mine might be twenty twenty-six.
Right, exactly.
So Alan should be three years from whenever he started.
Right.
Three years. That's, so as long as you coordinate that, we should be fine.
Right.
They did.
But Al's only a one-year term.
But according to this, it can't be. It's gotta be three.
You wanna see the piece of paper?
That's what.
So they shouldn't have given you one. It should've had three.
Exactly. That's what, that's the discussion.
Or, or that it was saying that you are finishing the term of the person who replaced.
That's what I'm thinking of.
He did six years.
No.
For his.
No, so when was his term up?
That, that term, when that term ended, that person stepped down, so Al wasn't fulfilling someone's unexpired term.
So he should've had three, so it was a mistake, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but, okay.
So just correct that mistake, then, just have it.
Well, it has to, it's a small number.
I should have a two-year term.
Why?
According to this?
According to this, uh, because I'm ETJ.
Then we really, and you were appointed for three, weren't you?
Yes.
Ah, well, I.
Okay, but, but, but didn't we have? Okay, so I replaced.
Excuse me.
Your fun. So he got off, he got off the, he went to council, so he replaced. And I replaced him, so in essence, if I, if I was replacing him, then I would've had to have like whatever he had left.
Right.
And that wasn't the case. They gave me three years.
Yeah, okay. So in other words, let's do, we need to figure out how we wanna move forward, because.
I would say three years, period.
You keep it to the way it is, and just figure out what Alan's is when he started, so.
Last month, last October? Last November?
Yeah, I would, I would say.
And just correct that, so just correct it for a three-year term.
But I think, but I think because it is in the UDO that it, it, we have to amend it.
No, because it's, because it says three. His is, it says three-year, staggered three-year terms.
Yeah, but no, 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 nonsense. Appointments shall be made for, but members may continue to serve initially.
Until their success, that's different, right? But it's a three-year term, so Alan's just was the mistake.
So that, that can still stay there?
So Alan should be from November of twenty twenty-two.
Guys, if you don't wanna listen to it, you're totally, please, no problem.
Okay.
Okay, here's what we're gonna do.
Uh, I think that this, this two-year, one-year, whatever, it, it follows the initially, so if we disregard the initially, because this is not initially?
I think what we need to do is, how would you, I kinda think the ETJ person should, should be appointed for three years.
I don't really have a preference. I think if, I, I think honestly with the ETJ, I think the intent of the ETJ member was to satisfy legality and less involvement in the community. Not to say that they shouldn't be involved in like the, the proper village zoning ordinances, but I think that they, at the beginning, when this all started, it was more of a position to be a representative member for the ETJ and not really have a lot of input.
That's changed.
Okay, but, but over and above that, I, let's talk, let's look at reality. The reality is that it takes about at least a year to understand.
To really get your seat on the board, a hundred percent.
So, so we're basically, I mean, I'm not saying that we don't serve for three years, but it's actually two years to be, to do a fairly good job of running, you know, learn. So I would go for the three. My question, though, is because all of this language is here, do we have to amend this?
We're not gonna amend this, I don't think. Al, you wanna get reappointed for three, or you wanna be done in a year?
I don't know yet. I don't wanna think about it.
But then we're not following rules, sir.
Well, but here's the thing. The council appointed him for a year. So we're, we need to probably let that come to conclusion. And then if Al, yeah, if Al stays, he, he gets, well, then I would make it probably two more.
But what, well, what was council following that?
Well, here's the thing. That's almost a year ago. And so we just made, we just appointed for the wrong length of time.
Right.
But I, what I'm trying to say is that they might be following this language right here.
So can't, I mean, isn't.
That language needs to be corrected.
Well, that's exactly what they were doing, Teresa. They were following that paragraph.
But that's why I'm saying that it needs to be corrected, so it doesn't represent from how did he ever.
Can't the council just amend it to give Alan a three-year instead of the one-year? Just correct it and say, instead of this one-year term, it's a three-year term, was our mistake, it's a three-year term. It ends instead of twenty twenty-three, it ends in twenty twenty-five.
I think where we're running, oh, sorry, go ahead. Uh, where we're running into trouble is, there's five members. And by the count and by the way that this is structured and, and written, we have two members that are at three years staggered. We have two-year members. One of us should, I should be two years, and one other council member should be.
It's not what it says.
Two years.
But that's, it says initially.
It says initially. That means when the board is first appointed.
So after that, we can kinda do that.
They're all threes, yeah.
Well, I think what they were looking at at the time, if you reflect back, there was only you, me, and Teresa. And they probably wanted a stagger.
But it still would've been staggered.
Right.
It's the three-year terms, that's why we did three, because it's still staggered.
But if you're, me and Teresa were actually within months of each other. Cause the whole.
Teresa came on in March.
No, cause I actually interviewed with that one, yeah, and I came in on October, some months, same, same year.
So you were like, you, you were like six months apart, though.
So only the first real sentence is really, that, after the initially, everything else went away. And then appointments shall be staggered in threes, and that should be all across the board.
Cause appointments to fill vacancies created by members who resign, otherwise.
But that, if somebody resigns, then they, they fill out the unexpired term. It's always like that.
And then you can go for the, if you wanna do three more years, you do three more years, yeah.
Okay, but then that, mine should not be three years if I was replacing.
No, you replaced somebody who stepped down, right? Or you replaced Gary.
So he was, he still.
No, I replaced Gary.
He was in the middle, no, no, no. Gary.
The guy who sat here?
No, he, yeah.
I replaced him.
He replaced Gary because Gary got elected.
Oh, so you were, yeah.
You're good.
I, I, okay.
So, so maybe that's where they sang the year. Did Gary only have a year left?
Gary had six years.
No, how many years left on his term? Maybe he only had a year left on his term.
No, he only served on planning and zoning for six months. Okay.
You got a year and a half left.
Who did I have to get? Who sat here, man? Tom. I replaced Tom, I'm sorry.
That's what I thought.
He had six years.
I came in right after Gary left.
Who was, what was his last name?
Tom the golfer.
Okay, let's wrap this up. You want, what do we wanna do here without, we wanna just let them run the way they are? And then we know that, let's say Al chooses to stay.
Then I'd have two more years.
We extend you to two.
I'd have to go take it all.
Yeah, but then, let's say you step down.
Somebody's gonna have to do three.
Then somebody does three.
Got it.
Does that make sense?
So instead of completing terms, you come in at a three-year term regardless.
Well, yeah, because Al's term is only a year.
Yeah.
So it's really not, yeah, it's not perfect, but I think that's probably the best way to do it.
I still feel like this should be amended, but I don't.
Well, what would you amend it to?
I'll just get, get rid of the initially.
I would take out everything that's initially.
Because why, it says appointments shall be made for staggered terms. Well, I mean, but that, you don't need to have the staggered terms, because it comes automatically when somebody's gone from the board, so that's kind of, to me, it's misleading.
Well, they just don't want everybody leaving at the same time. That's why they did.
They can't stop us from doing it.
Right, but, but initially, when you set up. Of course, but they, that's, anybody can leave, but that's the, the goal was to keep it that it was always somebody there.
Here's, here's the thing. Let's say for some reason, the council dissolves the current board. Which they would.
Oh, right.
But if they did.
But if they did.
Yeah.
When it was reappointed, which is what happened in twenty thirteen. We used to have a nine-member planning and zoning board. Nothing got done. So they, they, they dissolved the board and they reconstituted it with five members. So initially, we were, we were given different length terms, because otherwise everyone would've been done at the same time.
And then they have to do it again. They initially have to be in there. Okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
That makes sense?
All right, so let's go.
All right, so that's.
I was gonna say, just cut us apart here, just be like, that's it, everybody out.
Yeah, actually, no. So we go back to the land use plan? Which is what a interesting read, huh?
Well, you know what? Um, it is an interesting read, but I gotta tell you something. I wanna look at it, um. We've gone, we've updated it a couple times. But as I was going through it, I thought, you know, with the, the growth we've had, with RA five and stuff like that, I'm thinking, we really need to go in, and we won't get through it tonight. Uh, the land use plan.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, um, I, I just was like, it'd be kinda just really, I almost, I don't know if it needs an overhaul.
Where's the land use map that they keep describing?
Well, it was supposed to be on the website. I took parts of the zoning map. And we may have to fix that part, too. So I'm not sure the best way to go through this, um. Let me tell you where I think we're okay. I think the natural resources section is pretty, is pretty good. That's, that's pretty easy. Cause that, that hasn't really changed too much, but I think we'll go into, um. And remember, this is, we're talking about the village growth over the next twenty years. I think we need to relook at the background. And I really think we need to, um, look at the goals. I mean, I think we kinda really gotta go through the whole thing. And I also think that we probably need to marry it up against the long-range plan, which the council just approved. Okay? When we redid this back in twenty fifteen, the land use plan hadn't been updated probably since nineteen, I think it was eighty-one. It was, you know, done on a typewriter, and the biggest concern was, would members be able to get golf horse tee times? So, um, I think, I don't, the, the built environment, um, well, see, even the built environment, you know, like, we've got the extension of two eleven coming to four lanes and stuff like that, that impacts us. I don't think people understand that when that is, that is finished, you got a boom coming out of that part of the county.
We're about to have more traffic on Hoffman Road than we've ever had before.
But, but also the, what we talked about in previous times, which is, uh, pretty, pretty soon, within, what, five years, maybe? Ten, five to ten years, we'll, Blainehurst will be not just a boundary next to us, but the houses next to us.
Well, our ETJs will bump up.
Yeah.
Um, land supply and demand analysis, I think we really need to look at. I spent some time on, I don't know, City Data or one of those sites. And when we originally did this plan, the, the county at that time was, had a formula they used, because the county was growing eighteen percent per decade. We thought, well, that's good for us. I mean, why not, okay? So obviously, that got blown out of the water. The twenty twenty population, as much as I could find, looks like it was about seventeen sixty. Okay, now that's.
As far as personnel?
Well, as far as people. That same website also said that Foxfire employs five hundred and seventy-five people, which I thought was rather, I'm like, really, where? So we think all that data's suspect. Um, but we need to obviously update the population numbers to twenty twenty-three. We gotta figure out how we're gonna project to, um, twenty thirty and twenty forty, okay? And I'm not, I, it's kind of a wag, which is a wild.
Are there just forecasting models on the news?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
The City Data one is given, um, for all of Jackson Springs, so that's not really.
Yeah, just, can you, can you look, I, you could just look at Foxfire in there, though.
I, I put it in two seven, two eight, one.
Well, that, yeah, can you put it in by the city name?
No, the code is, but, uh, we are Jackson Springs, even though.
Right, but it's not Fox, just a village. It's not giving us the numbers from, just a village.
Mary, you said that they just approved it, but it's.
So it hasn't been updated since twenty twenty.
Okay, well, just get a source from the same place that I got their source?
They, the, the council, didn't they?
Right, they just updated it in twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so my question to you is, can we get a copy of it?
Yeah, it might, I, I don't know if it's up on the website yet, but we knew need to get a copy of it. Um, I think we need to look at the land use categories.
Oh, here it is, okay.
What, what'd they say?
Thirteen for twenty twenty-one, which is a year, thirteen twenty-four.
Well, that's probably about right. If we're thinking that right now we're seventeen to eighteen hundred, that's probably pretty close.
And what does it say in here that we were?
Twenty twenty, ten ninety-six.
So three hundred, yeah?
That's probably pretty close.
Did you go to their reference?
I went to City, the City Data.
What about their source right there? That's just below the numbers, the state of North Carolina memo?
Let me look.
Where, where are you on?
The City Data.
Yeah, City Data.
Okay.
I'm wondering, source. Well, you can, you can try to go to it, but you get, it, it's not, um, it's not very direct. Like, it's, you just get a homepage. You gotta search through here to find it. Maybe it's in facts and figures, but.
So, hey, guys.
A year ago, population demographics.
Go, go to page ten, if you would. And it talks about future land demand. Oh, no, that's all right. That's good. Mean density for commercial use. I think all of our low, very low-density stuff is probably where we wanna focus the most, very low density. Um, and then see where it talks about under medium density, like the acres available for commercial use and stuff like that. This all needs to be updated, because we don't have a hundred and forty-nine acres for commercial use. We don't have close to that.
Where, where'd they get the data from at the time?
Well, I don't, I'm trying to think where we got it from. I don't know, but that's gotta really be reworked.
Are we gonna have a special meeting on this?
Well, we're gonna have several meetings on it, I think. Um. Goals and objectives, before we hit that, we probably need to look at the long-range plan, although they're two separate things. The long-range plan covers four years, this plan covers twenty. So, they need to be compatible, but they don't need to be the same thing. So, how do we wanna attack this? You wanna split it up by sections? Don't all jump up and down at once?
I think, be personally, by chapter, and I think everybody at once, I think by chapter.
Yeah, me too, I, I agree.
Alright, then let's.
Cause I can go on my own little tangent in my house and come back and you're like, what the heck is he talking about?
First Al.
Too much Al, you're doing too much.
Stop thinking so hard, Al. That's what I love about you. Okay, so, um.
We have eight chapters.
Yeah. I wonder though, if we don't need to do some of them first, like.
I notice we'll have to update the VVD now to month.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um. Okay, the natural resources chapter doesn't concern me a lot, because that really hasn't changed much, okay? Um, but what I'm wondering is, should we start with? And, and when I look at the goals of the plan, I wonder if we don't need to go through the plan first? And then go back and update everything, and then go back and set the goals. I mean, it's kind of hard to me to set the goals if we don't know that the information we have in there is accurate. And we also need to put it up against the long-range plan.
Agreed.
Are we good with that?
I, I would say that we can set up whatever we want, but I would say that on our own, we should read this first.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think we should each go through it.
And get the long-range plan and review it on our own.
And then do chapter by chapter.
And then, because then we'll have a better view for it.
Okay, I would propose that at our next meeting, we work on the built environment, which shouldn't be too tough. We just need to address two eleven. And the land supply and demand analysis.
I think that's where it's gonna be the.
I think those are the.
How to figure out how to get that.
Yep, I think those are the big ones.
Do you think Lisa knows where that stuff came from? Cause she said you had like a council too.
When you talk about next meeting, I don't got a special meeting or a?
No, I'm not talking about a special meeting.
Regular meeting?
Regular, let's do regular.
Do you remember the people that you had on that CAC council or?
Okay, you said, build environment, which one?
Let's look at the last environment, chapters three and four, the built environment, and then land supply and demand analysis. That gives us a focus.
And before that, we should be reading these things, but we, we need to, can you find that for us, when the, what was the long-range plan is? Send us a copy.
Well, it'll go up on the website, so let me just take a look there.
With the planning zoning to update from two thousand or twenty.
Long-range plan is there.
And then revise from twenty twenty.
Yeah, there is one, but this is the one they recently updated.
Twenty, no, uh, twenty, yeah, two, tw- twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, I wish this was, it's this one.
Is the back interactive?
Very, yeah.
Hang on a second, I'm gonna go ahead, I'll email Lisa right now.
Yeah, it's easy. All you have to do is, um, if you go into the GIS, you can actually draw a line all the way around Foxfire. You can take that map and draw a line on every one of it, and then, um, it will calculate your, it will calculate your overall acreage. There's a draw function in the GIS that I love, cause you can separate lots out, do all kinds of fun stuff with it, and then know like how many acres you're pulling and pushing.
I just saw, uh, the twenty twenty-two.
How do you tell what?
Population is the same.
This is undeveloped.
Um, probably.
That's probably, if you're right, that's probably where they got it.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would just take a couple hours or a day or two with the maps to see, you can see what's developed and what's not developed. Of course, you can also run through each of the lots and see what the acreage is, if it's developed or not developed, and then separate it into, into your, um, a nice little Excel spreadsheet.
Okay, I just emailed Lisa, we'll see what we get, okay? Alright, so we got a good plan for that one. We'll focus on three and four for October, okay?
Okay.
So now, let's go to, Tasha's very timely link, on. Yep.
And a lot of it is, it's just, it's a great read to kind of get you in the mindset, and a lot of it is outdated. But if, um, if you get down to like page forty-seven, that's when it really starts to talk about how, um, zoning will need to change and some good examples of how.
Okay, again, what are you talking about?
She touches that different link, yeah.
Did you just find that rolling through?
I did.
Cool.
I was searching, I was actually, I'd, I'd already searched through like the Southern Pines stuff, and they don't really address multi-generational aid. They, they address, um. Multi-use property.
Yeah.
It's not generational, it's use, because you can also use it for rentals in Southern Pines.
Yes, and they are all over that.
And they're everywhere, and just about, like, all the, all the houses that are built up have.
All the same use now?
Um, well.
I mean, it's all housing.
Well, if you have multi-gener- if we were to zone in multi-generational housing, and, and not do it as multi, multi-use, you wouldn't, it would not be a rental. You wouldn't have a rental population. We already have a rental population in all of the condo, or a lot of the condos and stuff. But what, what they did in Southern Pines allowed people to have a residual income off of these, they almost feel like granny pods. They're like small, six hundred square foot, um, apartments that are behind and detached from ea- each of the houses. It's a fully detached, it does run on the same electric. Um, you do have the option when you build the house to run separate electric, but most are on their, they are, most of them are rented out whole park. Which means all your septic and electric, water, everything's in your rent.
Do you remember I mentioned it, how it, it was, it wasn't, it is, in Los Angeles, they call me the granny unit, which.
Yeah.
That's one. But the other one, they just called them how, the guest houses.
Guest houses. I think they.
So they allow, they allow people's garages to be, you know, the, the, there's a, to obtain a variance and build one, you know, like a guest house.
I did not go that far into the, to the Southern Pines stuff. I don't know that they allow, yeah. I don't know that they allow it. These units are all, this is all new in the last two years, since twenty twenty. Um, so, t- three years. Really, the first one I ever saw was in twenty twenty-one, I was blown away. Um, but it's, it really is, it's the size of a small, small garage or detached building.
It's, it's like a guest house.
And it is, but it can be also, have, some of them have lofts in them, they could be a little taller.
Yes, or it can be on top of the garage too, that's the other thing.
Oh, like a bonus usage room.
But they're all, but, but, but the distinction is that it's on the same meter. Everything is on the same meter, uh, the electrical, everything is as the main house.
I think in Southern Pines, you have the option.
No, no separation.
I like the, the, the together, but especially for our, for our purposes, for what we're thinking of going forward, what the, what multi-generation means in Foxfire Village. It's not meant to add rental income and a bunch of rental facilities, it's more meant to be, um, to follow the trend of housing shortage, um. Inflation and, and older, the older generation and the boomerang kids and all of these other things, people are having to, to, to pull together with resources to be able to, to function.
But you're not talking about building an entire new house. And what you do for your family.
They, they're building, they're building whole other houses.
Written to you about, because there was the property where the house burned down, my brother was interested in it.
Right.
And they had that big three-car garage, and he said, oh, he said, why? He says, maybe I could do it, live in that while the house is being built, and then like my mom could come live there.
See, but the zoning right now is gonna prohibit that.
Right.
But the zoning prohibits that right now, yes.
So that's what that's.
That's what we're starting to really open the conversation for, because it's a huge trend and it's coming.
Yeah.
No, and that's, I mean, that's what, but that's where it's going now.
Exactly, and we're, we're just trying to get ahead of, get ahead of what most other municipalities will be dealing with in another year from now. The housing shortage is a ten-year deficit, there's no way out of it. You cannot build houses fast enough for the up-and-coming generation to buy. There, and, and older generations are living longer, where there's no way out of the deficit right at this point, it's too long.
Then it almost goes back to though, just like the temporary, well, not the temporary buildings, but the, uh.
Oh, the, yeah.
Because then you don't want giant buildings built on these small lots.
Well, but, but wait a minute, you, you, you're gonna have to comply with the watershed, although here, I mean, you can build twenty percent of your lot.
Yeah, but the lift out here is gonna be septics.
Yeah.
Because you can only have something that is for septic.
Septic is definitely gonna be the limit.
And I think when you're talking about multi-generational living, you're talking about a big, it, it's a big family, but it'd be no more than like a household with four kids. Cause what you're, probably the majority of people are gonna be either aging parents with a, a kid and a child, or two kids or whatever that moved back, and they live as a family. You're, you're not talking about, you know, fifteen people in a house, you're still talking probably seven and under.
But I, I thought we were talking about, when we brought up the discussion, I thought it was a completely different discussion.
I think we're talking about both.
Because, because how do you prevent everything that you're talking about to be a rental?
Well, and that, that, that's a really good question.
How do you prevent, you can't prevent it?
When you set it up, you know, I mean, yes, you can, you, I mean, you could, uh, have your tenant, like in the case, like when I was telling you about. You know, where you have remodel garage or whatever, another unit, or, you know, as a modern old unit, whatever. Obviously, you can say, okay, well, you pay me for whatever, you know, established. Yes, but, but at, at least I think it's more preventable to have some, to be used as a rental. When I'm talking about the one that it's connected to your, you know, meter and it's a small unit or whatever. You're actually building a whole, uh, the house.
Well, remember, the thing that came up in the legislature was.
It wouldn't be a whole nother house regardless.
That would be family subdivision.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but that's what I'm talking about.
That's not what we're talking about. And I think what we had began the discussion with was, there's one house over, um, on Richmond Road. That is, it looks like a V, and you have, they have the, the main.
They share one roof.
Yeah, they share one roof, they have one structure that is, is, and then they have a common space in between, and they have an apartment over here, common space, and then they have a, a full house here. You don't need, if you were to look at, unless I had walked in that house, I'd have never known that it was a multi-generational space, but it's brilliant. It's brilliantly designed, it's, it's fit to the neighborhood, yeah.
And you know what? As soon as that house was built, the zoning ordinance got changed.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah. So, so let's, I think we got two parts to talk about. We don't need to spend a lot of time on it tonight, but, but be sure when people start asking about it, this is a discussion. I suspect we'll have some open meetings where people just sit around and talk, hey, let's, let's.
Give their opinion, like what areas?
Let's talk about, you know, what it might look like, because remember, the state legislature, although the bill didn't go anywhere, was proposing that every lot could have an accessory house.
Truth.
And, and that's to, to our, to us, that's like, oh my God, I, I didn't, I didn't sign up for that. And septic will be the, septic and water will be our biggest issues. But, the idea of, and I don't, whether we do it in two different pods, so to speak, if we talk about multi-generational, and then we talk about rental. Cause I'm with Teresa. I mean, whether, if I attach something to my house and that runs on my electric and my water. I mean, if it's not a family member who's there, but it's somebody else who's there, let me give you a perfect example. If I was to do it. I'd build something so that the contract nurses who come to the hospital for three, four, five, six months, they're nice people, they're gonna come in, they don't, if they just come themselves, they're traveling nurses. They'd be probably great tenants. I mean, so, we might have to talk about it in two different blocks, but I, but there's gonna be a lot of overlap.
I think we have to go into an understanding that you, and, and North Carolina has moved this way every step of the way, and including this, you know, the bill with talking about ETJ. There is less and less, um, push to tell people what to do in their homes and with their property. So, a- and I'm just saying, just as a, as a case, you know, going forward, looking forward-facing, let's say someone does build a multi-generational home. And it is within what we come up with as a, a structure, and they're using it for the right way and the right reason. Um, but what about when they pass away and they, they sell that house? You still can't keep that person from renting out that room or that space, it won't ever happen.
It sounds like a headache.
And if you do try to do that, what's the difference in their home and all the condos that are over here that have been rentals for, for forty years?
So, so let's say, I'm going back to my experience. Let's say you have, I had to convert it, my garage, you know, so that, which I did. My mother, my mother lived in, in a remodel garage we did for her, okay? You know, it was a one-room, so, you know, like, that, that's it. Uh, but I didn't do it with a permit, but let's say I would.
Teresa, turn the camera off, Sandy, we can't have that on here, can't have.
But, but if I would have, if I would have done it with a permit.
That's your limitations right now.
The, the permit would have, the, 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 then the house would have had to have, you're sincere, to mortgage. It would have had to have the stipulation that there is a converted garage with the permit that it can be used only for blah, blah, blah.
I don't think that they would do that at the county, they would never do that, it would be back to the water and the septic. What would happen is, if you were to do a, let's say you have an existing home and you want to add on. Each home in our county, based on the watershed, based on the, the, the perk test and all of that stuff, that's on record with environmental. They will decide how much you can permeate that surface and have a, a flow through and, and that septic to work properly. So if you've got a lot, and it'll start with the septic on all of this. So if you've got a lot and you're permitted for three bedrooms, two baths, and you have a three-bedroom, two-bath house there, you're not gonna be able to add anything else. Until you get it re-permitted, re-perked, and they'll, they'll, they'll follow that with the county. I sold a house, I flipped a house about ten years ago, that I, it was, um, it was building seventy-seven, it was one of the first houses over in Seven Lake South. And it was, um, what they, the northern people would come here, and they didn't have hardly any kitchen, they'd have two master bedrooms and maybe an office or a workout room, and that would be it. But the workout room didn't have a closet, so it couldn't be a bedroom, and the septic was septic for two bedrooms. But the house was large enough for me to remodel the inside and add more bedrooms. So that's what we did, but I had to go to the county. And make a plan with them to add to the septic, so it could be a four-bedroom, two-bath home. And I did that, I followed the permits, I put in the new septic or added to the septic that was existing that was viable, but all of that was county-led. And if it were to be multi-generational, as we're starting this conversation, it's not just gonna be Wawa West. We still have to follow state and county rules, we still have to follow watershed rules, we still have to follow, and, and it's gonna be county-led. They would have to first go to Lisa to get approval, and then to the county to get their inspection for their septic.
Yep, exactly.
You can't just start flowing through.
I think Tasha's got a really good point.
Okay, well, I just wanna make sure that it's, we're not creating, creating a, a rental.
I don't think so.
Sort of like, you know, by, by virtue of us would have been doing.
Even, even if the, and one of the things that I know about bad legislation is it continues to come around. I mean, it just, that's how we got SB twenty-five, where, you know, villagers could no longer say that garages had to be on the side and stuff like that. It took ten years to get that through the legislature. So we will probably, it'd be great if we didn't, but we're, that action in the legislature about accessory dwellings, that maybe didn't go anywhere this time, but it's not gone.
No, we already got.
No, no, and even, even, even in Los Angeles, in the years that I lived there, I saw how, you know, and it's still changing because, you know. And you need to make arrangements legally to try to adapt to whatever changes you.
You know, there was also, and this, I think they have this in California now, where you can have, like, you can be in a single-family neighborhood, but somebody could come in and build quads on an empty lot.
Oh, wow.
In my opinion, we would be better off to deal with multi-generational housing and an accessory dwelling than we would to have to open up our single-family residential stuff to, you know. A, a group of, you know, quads or something like that. That's a totally, that's kind of the destruction of single-family residential. But here, we're, whether, we're also gonna have to address, like Teresa, how do you know if they're not renting into somebody?
I don't think you get a choice in the, yeah.
Uh, you, you're just gonna, but, but again, if it's something that's attached at the back of the house, you're gonna, and the county is absolutely gonna have to lead the thing. You aren't gonna be able to just have a bedroom and slap a bedroom and another bathroom.
No, it has to be, it has to be built properly, yeah, it's gotta be right.
They're gonna send you right to the county.
It, it just, it, to me, it's, we already have the ordinances, we, like you said, with the septic, you know, you can't build, you have three bedrooms, that, that's it, you know, you can't. So that, that's not going to be a question.
Unless you redo the septic.
Right, unless you redo it, and you can do it, then you have to get the permits and then write, do it. But so, but why, if you're thinking, and I understand, because I have kids that, you know, could possibly come back and, you know, not that they're not, they're going to, but, I mean, they could.
It could happen.
It could happen, but you know, right now, we have an extra bedroom, and that would be fine, but, you know, it sounds like, just reading a little bit of what you said. That's like, to me, if you have family, mom and dad's coming back, and kids come back, then you. That's like, to me, if you have family, mom and dad's coming back and kids come back, then you look for a bigger house, you know, it's not that you.
Well, but the challenge is, there's a housing, there's a housing shortage, and you're gonna have.
And everyone gets too expensive, they might get too expensive.
Yeah, but I mean, you can't have if you keep building a house and you just can't do that.
But but the point is that, you know, you might be faced, a lot of people are faced with that.
I think the most, most of what we'll deal with in our area, we have a lot of retirees that moved here twenty, thirty years ago. Now they're facing a situation where they have family members that could and would move to them, that they would like their privacy in their own space. And then you couple that with the fact that it costs eight to twelve thousand dollars a month for residential care when you're going to these facilities.
I'm just gonna say, my mother-in-law was in long-term care.
It's four thousand dollars to forty-five hundred a month.
Oh, it's way more than that.
Well, I'm talking about in-home. So if you have an aging parent that lives in your home in their own little space.
Right.
They have their own privacy, they're very capable, but they still need in-home care, that is a, it's half the budget to expand the house. You live in the home with your family and then they still have their own life and their own space.
They even have their own entrance.
Yes, they have their own, you know, stuff.
But you're there.
But you're there if they need you, and you can also provide at a reasonable, more reasonable amount for in-home health care.
Yeah.
And I, and and when I say forty-five hundred, that's forty hours a week. If you have to cut it, if you can cut it to half that, because you can help out because you're living in the other portion of the home.
And that's exactly what you're.
This is really what I think, that's the more realistic idea, but. Forward-facing again, once that person passes away, there's nothing we can do to stop that person from, A, buying another home and renting that whole home out. Or renting that smaller space. They will never be able to rent that small space to a whole family.
No, and I think.
And it's a small space.
And push back to the same thing. Let's say what I did, you know, for my mom, and then we'll.
Yes.
I I know that the people that bought the house were large Chinese families of the world, that more than.
Good food.
More than thrilled about having, you know, because they they have extended family living with them.
It's a cultural, yeah, they have.
I I only had one electric bill, one water bill, so.
I support that idea. I support the one, the one thing.
Yeah, because it's gonna limit what somebody does.
Yeah, I mean, not every tenant is gonna come and.
I think it also limits the commitment to do, to, I mean, they're already stretched thin, and to have them coming in and putting in gray hats. If you run it on the same electric, we're not gonna have a problem from that.
Not only that, but in a village like ours, you don't have any extra water line. I mean, that that would be insane.
No, I don't know that we're capable of, I mean, like, it's for the woman.
So even if you do it that way, you still have to worry about the septic and.
Yes, absolutely.
The septic, septic, I agree with Tasha. Septic is, in our area, septic's the driver.
Right.
And when I did something.
And they don't play around with the county. That is a hard line.
So even if you have a three-bedroom house and you wanna do an accessory building that make it into apartment, you still now, that's an extra bedroom and.
You're gonna have to go through septic.
That's exactly right. If you put, if you put a bathroom in there, you have.
Let's let's develop something that we have a built-in. You know, I mean, not not full proof a hundred percent, or a built-in security that, for the most part, it will go the way we see it or we want it.
So are we saying that we have to, we want it to be, it doesn't matter really whether it's attached or detached?
Yeah, to me, it doesn't.
As long as it's all the same electrical and plumbing grid.
If I remodeled the garage because my garage was detached, but it would be the same as if you had a guest house or something.
And they do, I mean, it might be worth a field trip if you have time and you're riding through Southern Pines, you go on Page Street. Um, they, you can see, there's multiple houses and they all have the little pods in the back. That would be the idea of what it has to be, um, it has to be in keeping with what the residence is. It has to be the same light color, same light material.
Sort of like you have an accessory.
Same, yes, yes, exactly.
Something like, cause I don't know, but if you have like a three-quarters of acre property and you have the septic put in for a three-bedroom house. What, how much more capacity do you need for the septic, and is that something that you could even do on a three-quarter acre?
Yeah, you would be, you would find out at the county. They would tell you whether or not you could expand that system, but keep in mind too, every home in our county that has a septic system also has to reserve an amount of land for septic repair, which means an entire new system with just the piping running back to the house. So when you get a septic system, you also have a repair syst area. You can't cover any of that.
Yeah.
They're gonna look at that and go, okay, well, you can't place it here because it's in your repair area.
It's gonna be a little, it's gonna be more complicated than people think. Which is gonna discourage some people from doing it.
It won't be for everyone.
No, but on the, on the other hand, though, if we can do it so that, I mean, if we can do it in such a way that it works. I mean, my mother-in-law lived with us for two and a half years, right, and we happen to have, we have a three-bedroom house, but the rooms are big, so we gave her her own bedroom. She had her own TV room, her own bathroom. It would've been perfect if I could've just cut that off from the, I mean, just kinda.
Put a door in.
And and she had just had, you know, I mean, it not, she was a nice lady.
For privacy, right.
But it would've been great if it had been just a little bit separated.
Little bit more separated, where you do have, you have, you'd have less shared spaces.
Right.
You have full autonomy and privacy in each area, and I I just don't think that there's any, I know that that creates a rentable space. But I think the the nuance of it and how many houses would actually even qualify for it septic-wise.
It's good, that's gonna be interesting.
Be, I think, the more, you know, more the exception than the rule.
I'm curious about this septic thing situation, and you mentioned, my house was built with two bedrooms and a studio.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
And the studio has a closet, so now it's a third bedroom. I bought it as a third bedroom. Would the septic then have been approved for a two-bedroom?
I think that you would have to go back.
I understand I have two tacks, so I'm pretty much covered, but I'm wondering.
Let's look at it. We'll we'll check it out.
Tell me, okay.
Real quick, I can pull up, I can pull up your environmental report and tell you exactly, yeah. If you don't have a record, I will take it off.
Look it up and then let's wrap it up.
Okay.
No, but I'm curious, because you mentioned it, uh, and you, and and also, like what you say, Mary. You have, you have three bedrooms, I have, and you had one, you know, one used for your mother-in-law. So I'm wondering. Let, I mean, I don't have anybody to bring to my house, but I'm wondering if if that was the case. If if being that the house was originally two-bedroom.
But what you're talking about doing is adding another bathroom.
Looking at that.
That's gonna work.
What's your address?
Four Pine Top Court.
Four what?
Four Pine Top Court.
Pine Top.
Two words?
Two words, yes.
Top Drive, maybe?
No, no, Court.
There we go.
There it is.
Okay, so now if you go to. DTLs, okay, where to go?
More info.
Yeah, go to.
Environmental Health.
Go to more info, and it is the environmental health, and you can pull up.
You got the original septic.
There you go.
I understand I have two septic tanks.
And what?
My court is.
Well, that's.
Well, some people have two septic tanks, and you have one that is for solids and one that is for a a liquid.
Two chambers.
Right, two chambers, but that would mean you have a shorter, um, leach field. So if you have two tanks, you have a shorter leach field, but then you, sometimes you have one tank, you have a longer leach field, because that's where all your liquids. Leach field is all of these lines, and that's where.
Yeah, you can't build on there.
Septic stuff, it's all your solids are on the bottom.
You got your tank?
Yeah, there you go.
The poop goes in the tank.
It goes down to the, I was trying to find a better way to do it.
And the water goes out into the field.
I was trying so hard.
Where on your lot, the grass is really green.
Also, your two cha- tanks, there's your home.
Yeah.
Your two tanks are chambered here, and this is your leach field.
Oh.
You have two leach lines that go out. That's actually a small number.
But again, uh, uh, uh.
So you have three bedrooms, two baths.
So that shows us three bedrooms?
Yes.
Also, when they they converted the third one, and they actually.
They had to do it.
They they did it through the county.
If that's accurate, you've got a pretty old septic system.
Correct.
Well, the house, my house is older than most of them.
Any one that says so?
I'm in the original part of.
So you got a forty-year-old septic, it's, it's lived a good life.
Was built, uh, I'm in the old section of of.
Okay, so, let's just kinda wrap up a little bit. I think we're all in agreement that we need, we're gonna need to figure out something. And we know septic will be a big deal. We're talking about, when we talk about multi-generational, we're talking about your family, right?
And then we're talking about keeping it on on the same.
That somebody has.
Well, I don't think we can make that stipulation, because eventually it's gonna be sold, and you can't, you can't say, oh, only your mom can live in there.
No, I don't, no, 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 no. No, but I'm, I'm also.
Excuse me, is that your mom?
My mom stays, okay?
I believe you see your license.
No, but I'm talking about the, the, eh, the la, the, you know, the electrical and all.
Well, I think, okay, but I think if we stick with, it's one electrical and it's one water.
Yeah.
First off, it means that that we don't, and you have to look at this in terms of what it does to the village too, right? I mean, if we have to type, tap on and put in a separate water line, we're gonna need more village help. I mean, you're gonna have more people hired by by the village because one guy can't do that all, okay? So if we can stick with a shared water line, a shared septic system, and shared electrical.
Yes.
That, I think, is a pretty smart, if we can do that, then it's gonna help shape what we do.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, I think that's.
But it also, to me, is like, uh, you know, slight assurance that if this is.
It's not gonna get out of hand, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are gonna have to work on a little bit about size. Okay, in in that, and I, that may be the state legislature, I would imagine, would love to get involved in that, but we do wanna, we wanna be careful about size.
I think Southern Pines has definitely set size limits, because I've noticed they're all about the same size or smaller.
Okay, so that's good. So let me propose this. Um, that's a really good start, actually, on that. So, um, single systems. Everybody okay in the next couple of weeks to look at Southern Pines? Just ride through there and see what it looks like?
Yes, what what.
And I'll tell you what.
It's like a main driver there, maybe?
Is it main driver or page?
I think it's a main.
Let me double.
They got the little square option, the one in the back.
Yep, each one, there's like four in a line, and each one of them have it, but there's a lot now, so they're all over.
But where, where, where are they?
Stand by, stand by. Um.
Barry, I think I found something too, what we're discussing on that.
Open house over there.
Oh, really? For construction?
Yeah, is it called the expiration of certificates of compliance? Is it, would that be the?
CO certificate of occupancy. A CO would be a certificate of occupancy.
I don't see that, but it talks about certificates of zoning and water supply compliance shall expire on the back end of one year after. They should have such a permit, the authors, the use authorized by such certificate has not commenced. Basically, it's saying.
It is.
You got a year to do it and then you can extend another year, if that's what that is. The zoning administration may extend for a period of one year, the date when the certificate would otherwise expire.
What section are you in?
Twenty-one dash six dash nine dash six. It's talking about building codes and building.
Okay.
So twen, we know on your twenty-one.
Twenty-one dash six dash nine point six?
Yes.
All right, good place.
I didn't know they could only work till six o'clock too.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And the ones I'm talking about are North Page Street. If you start at three-ten down to three, three-seventy, and then you can wrap around to three-thirty West Vermont. But they all have that secondary structure, except for the, there's one like right in the middle that the lot wouldn't permit. But other than that, you have a secondary structure, and they're in different forms, so it's good to see. So you've got one here, you've got one here, you've got one here, and you've got one here.
So they actually did it in a specific area?
Um, this, this, this particular developer, I happen to know, and he does it on almost every one of his homes. The house itself, all of it, the way he builds is very modern, very streamlined, um, or he can throw a little bit of craftsmanship in there. But it is mostly very streamlined, very tall, skinny homes, and then you have that granny pod in the back. And they're all about six hundred square feet. They all have, um, a nice little bathroom, one had a loft. I mean, it was a very neat concept. Um, so, and and they weren't, use them all for rentals, like, two or three of the people are using them for rentals. And one person's just using it as, um, like a man cave. So like, that, the dad was like, I love this house, I don't get a garage here, so I want that.
Uh, is this something we might, and we would, uh, allowed to be on top of a garage?
I think that's.
Completely structural. That's a totally different, like, you mean, if you built up?
Yes.
Well, again, it's gonna, it'll come back to, you gotta get it permitted. You're, you you're gonna have to, if you're putting, like, in my house, it's a ranch, so if I decided to put a middle story on, you could certainly do that, but, I mean, that's, that's, it's more, well, if it's more costly or not. But you couldn't stop somebody from building up as long as.
As long as that would be structurally okay, then.
When we address it, is that something that we would address that?
I, I wouldn't address that, I don't think. I think I would look at it the same way as if somebody brought brand-new construction plans in, we're gonna build on a lot, and then we're gonna build a multi-structural, or a multi-family house. And you have the main home, the garage, and then you have a garage apartment with its own entrance, own parking, all of that, so, I mean, it's no different.
Along with new construction, no?
Well, I mean, it would be, you could modify the existing, but I would think of it the exact same way. If you would allow it in new construction, why would you not allow it in, in a remodel? If the county engineers agreed that that was structurally okay.
Yeah, that's a lot more structural work.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But I think the concept is what we're really talking about, not necessarily the nuts and bolts of how they will do it. The county will take care of that, the engineers will take care of that. We're starting the conversation as if, is, we're gonna allow the concept.
And that's really what we're talking about.
But, but along with the concept.
We wanna put on.
Right, right.
But along with the concept, wouldn't we, uh, address in general location of it?
No, no, because you're gonna have to be with, I would say.
It has to be within the building code.
It has to be within the building code. We're gonna also have to take a look at things like setbacks. I mean, I would say, and that's.
Has to be within.
I was gonna say, I think you gotta be within the setbacks. What the state proposed was a five-foot setback. I mean, you gotta be out of your.
To your neighbor?
Yeah, thank you.
Wow.
But, you know, so.
That's, that's.
Your mother doesn't see your neighbor.
Yeah, but this isn't.
Put it five feet.
I mean, he's looking at, I mean, I have five feet, and five feet puts the other out.
I think it really needs to marry up to the existing.
As much as possible.
Existing build zones as mu, existing zones as much as possible. It will be allowable within.
Yeah.
So to me, I think it's gonna fall along the lines of, you know, we put in the, um, additional structures. This is, if you did a granny pot set of a garage or a building, it's gonna be the same thing, same square footage.
It is, yeah.
As some of these additional structures.
I was looking at accessory buildings, thinking, huh, what if you just couldn't use one of those, pop it on your lot and have somebody build out the inside?
Right.
And you can.
Some of those, I mean, some of them are.
For the cost of that, you can buy the same.
Don't you mind, mine looks big enough that I could have a.
They're building those same things in granny pots. That's what they're using as the outward structure. These same companies are building these, these granny pots.
It comes back to, I mean, all that can be done, and builders can do anything, you know, but it comes back to the septic.
That's exactly right, because it's very different when you're talking about an accessory building with no toilet.
Right.
It's a piece of cake.
It's a piece of cake.
But you have a toilet.
The toilet in there, now you're talking about, you're talking about county septic, and we cannot supersede that.
And, you know, the other thing too is, it's not gonna be an inexpensive thing to do.
Hundred percent.
Because the builder's gotta go through all the same work, maybe less square footage, but it is not gonna be an inexpensive thing.
Right.
I mean, the best way to do it, if you really wanted to do multi-generational, would be to add on to your current house, right? Have a shared wall, have a separate entrance and stuff like that, but, I mean, putting up, I don't know what, I don't know what people, well, let me ask you something. In Southern Pines, both of those, let's say, the main house and the pod, they have to be sold together.
Absolutely.
Okay.
They're on the same power.
Same block, okay.
Um, most of what he's put in is the same. I think he may have one that has its separate power, separate everything, but it's set up for a rental house.
Okay.
And Southern Pines has no problem with that. Most of, I mean, they have a tremendous amount of rentals. They don't, they don't, they're not.